And it's seven o'clock, we'll call the regular village board meeting to order. Everyone rise to say the pledge please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk would please call the roll?
Morewka here.
Jones.
Here.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the May 28th, 2019 regular village board meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? If not, a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Ham.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
March.
Yes.
Morewka.
Yes.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 6/1/19 in the amount of $48,809.54. Accounts payable, general fund, $83,868.83. Giving a total of all funds, $18,868.83. Are there any questions on any of the bills? Not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
I'll motion it.
Second? Motion by trustee Morewka, seconded by trustee Bowden.
Morewka, yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
March.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions? Reports of committees, village administrator report?
I have my report in your packet, but I just wanted to point out, one, a kind of business expansion, which would be Cleveland Steel. They're updating their facility and currently investing about $1.3 million in a new building. I think that's pretty exceptional. They're a steel company, they make steel buckets, I'm sure you're all very well aware of that. But I think it's phenomenal that they're putting that much investment in a Piaton facility, they're an Ohio-based company, and they have 65 employees here in their Piaton factory. And so we're, I'm just very excited that they're doing upgrades, and they've been doing some upgrades periodically, but this one's a big one.
Pretty significant one, yeah.
So I just wanted to point that out.
Anything else?
No.
All right, no police chiefs report this evening, engineers report?
The resourcing and patching project is going out to bid on June 20th at 9:00 a.m. It'll be a bid opening here, so hopefully we can get that on the next board meeting agenda for an award. The sidewalk program, the contracts are under the contractor, so we're waiting for those to get executed, and we need to get on their schedule.
Okay. Good, how about, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Route 50, they did the, they paved the binder courses called, which is the main structure of the road. They're doing some underground work for the signals, so they're moving along, they still have to do the sidewalk, they still have to remove the existing pavement, resurface the whole thing with two layers. Still some work to do, but they're making progress.
Hopefully the weather will cooperate a little bit more here now?
Yeah. And then on Rathgie Road, there's just a couple punch list items to do, and they said they're gonna try it out there next week.
Okay.
Is one of those punch list items that swaled the trustee Jones?
By the school?
Yes.
The nuthood property?
Yeah. Where the new culvert is, and then there's a really low spot that stays wet?
Yeah, that's south of the creek.
Yes.
Yes. They haven't been able to, because it's been so wet, but they said that...
They intend to bring that up, so...
They're supposed to take care of that.
retain water.
Yep, great, thank you.
Any questions for the engineer?
I have a quick report on it.
Well, go right ahead, sir.
So, the administrative oversight committee met last week. We had presentations from First Midwest Bank and PFM Investments on, you know, what we're gonna do with the money that we got from the sale of the water sewer system. And I think we're pretty close to bringing the recommendation to the board, probably next meeting. We just had a couple questions that we wanted to answer before we bring the whole thing to the meeting, but we're pretty close to that, so I envision that coming next meeting.
Okay, good, good. Anything else?
What kind of a return are you anticipating?
Well, unfortunately, the interest rates are actually dropping right now. The Fed is, you know, talking about cutting their interest rates at least once, maybe a couple times this year or so. Realistically, you know, we're looking at maybe 2.5%. And they are recommending, you know, not tying money up for a long period because, you know, interest rates may go back up, and so we don't want to be tied anymore, but that's kind of where we're at. But there are opportunities that, you know, even if we gain half a percent over what we're making now, you know, $10 million, that's a lot of money.
Yeah. Good, well, we'll wait to hear from, you're meeting the 19th, I think it is?
I think so.
Yeah, right. Good. All right, anything else in the other committees? Sorry?
Did I miss the comments?
Yeah, well, you did. I can circle back.
If you could.
I will.
Okay.
Go ahead. We'll circle back to that, go ahead. Come on up and give your name, please.
My name's Ed Nelson, I live in Ashburn Estates in Piaton. The big topic in the neighborhood lately has been the poultry, or turkeys, chickens. They're not there anymore. We've got a neighborhood covenant that apparently the original people that moved in 14 years ago, or 15 years ago, all got, but it seems that none of the new residents within the last couple years, I mean, have been getting them.
Okay. Now, covenants aren't enforceable by the village, am I correct, Jim?
Correct.
Covenants are only enforceable by the homeowners association.
Okay, which we don't have at the moment, but that's what we've been following these rules for, since it was...
Yeah, and that whole, that whole issue, originally, last meeting, I think I referred it to building, and then after further thought, it fits more, it's an ordinance, so it fits more under administrative oversight, so I've sent it to administrative oversight. So administrative oversight is gonna be looking at, you know, whether or not we're gonna make any changes to that ordinance or not, but, so like I said, the covenants...
Would our covenant override Piaton, or...
I would think the covenant, if the covenant's enforceable by the homeowners association, it would override...
Or the individual homeowners as against somebody who violates the covenant. But it's an independent action by the homeowners association or an owner of the property that seeks to enforce the covenant as to, as against another owner.
And that's where we really, we haven't, because everybody's kind of living under the covenant.
Right, and that's the idea behind having those in place.
Sure. Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Kind of sort of.
Okay.
We just wanna make the board aware that...
Okay, no, good, and that's, appreciate, appreciate that. Like I said, the administrative oversight will take a look, and they'll bring back a recommendation to the board whether or not we're even interested in weakening the ordinance, or possibly strengthening the ordinance, you know, either way, so that's...
98% of the people are against poultry in town.
I understand. Nope, good, I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Morewka.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Just to make it a little clearer, we're kind of, we're kind of busy with trying to get this money.
Right, no, I understand that. It's not a...
It might not be the next meeting.
And that's fine, like I said, I just wanted it on your, I wanted it on your radar.
Yes, it's definitely on our radar.
And then just plug it into one of your upcoming agendas. But now, no, focus on what you're focusing on right now.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, please.
Were your covenants against poultry, or did they have something that were in opposition to allowing chickens?
It's against.
Okay, could you leave me a copy of your covenants, just so I can have them handy?
But your homeowners association is disbanded?
It's never been formed.
It's never been formed.
Ah, okay.
The developer's still, has lots to develop, so we've never done anything.
Even though there is no homeowners association, the covenants would still remain in effect if one person said hey.
Correct, yes, and the developer, in other words, the developer hasn't sold the requisite number of properties, is that the situation?
That's what we understand.
Okay, then... We'll have to take a look at that, too, because that's, that's fairly sold out there. I mean, there's not that many lots left.
Maybe there's maybe seven.
Out of how many, excuse me, out of how many lots?
Maybe thirty.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it, we'll do some investigating into that, though.
Should be seventy-five percent.
Okay.
Shouldn't we have a copy of the covenants of all the, on file, just so there's a reference point?
I suppose you certainly could. You could, I mean, but again, we can't enforce them, so, no, I understand what you're saying.
And, trustee Jones, they are on file, yeah. I mean, we can look them up.
Right.
If subdivision's developed, it'd be nice to have, get on.
Any other reports from the committees? All right, we'll move on to old business, item A, review additional information regarding street sweeping requested from 5/28 board meeting, possible action regarding lease purchase of street sweeper. Superintendent Anki?
We should all, got some stats or notes I put together since the last meeting. Called around different communities, and got some, Frankfurt budgets, $35,000 a year. They did one town sweeping, it cost them $22,000. Feature, they sweep once a year. They rent a sweeper for $1,500. Mooney bought a sweeper, Pelican sweeper, smaller than what we use here, but it takes more manpower to run that sweeper. This sweeper we have in house, we made purchase, takes one person. This usually takes two. Waste management, Raffdale, we made a phone call, weren't interested in giving us the quote. I reached out to Homewood, I talked to Tom with Homewood, he quoted us $135 an hour, and we'd only received six sweeps a year. We average in-house 20 sweeps per year.
Plus the downtown board?
Plus the downtown once a week. Also, that's during the warm months, but in my little notes here I made, we were able to sweep all the way to Christmas last year, so, depends on what. Yeah.
So at 20 sweeps by Homewood, 21 hours, at $135 an hour, we're looking at $56,700.
A year.
A year.
And if you multiply that times a 20-year life expectancy, that's over a million dollars.
Right.
And here we're talking, I think our street sweeper program's a great program, I mean, I think we're head and shoulders above the other communities with it, and it really jumps, it makes the town stand out.
Well, it helps that, and it's also used, Donna and I were talking before the meeting, it's used to clean out the catch basins.
Like I said, we've had a sweeper since I was a kid here. I think it's a great piece of equipment for us, we've always had one.
And then also didn't today, you went back to TIMCO today?
I did, I did.
They brought their interest rate down to that, pretty much, Elgin was at 3.79, now they're at 4.8, they were what, 4.3, I think, 4.2?
It's on there.
Something like that?
Yeah, they were at 4.8.
So they came down, they came down on their interest rate a little bit also?
They were 4.49, their CO was, so they came all the way down to 3.8.
So I know that trustee Bowden and trustee Ham, you know, you were asking, you know, for this information, does this, does this get what you were looking for?
Yeah, a little bit, I guess I question why such the dire difference between number of sweeps per year versus the running average of other communities? Are we a dirtier town?
Well, trustee Jones touched on, you touched in that last meeting, we have curbs and gutters, where some of those other communities do not, so that tends to blow out more, you know, off of the streets, where we tend to collect it in those curbs and gutters, it doesn't, you know, get taken away by the wind as much. So I think that's one of the reasons why, you know, I would definitely prefer to continue to sweep, you know, at the level we're sweeping.
And the sweeper we have, we talked about repair and maintenance, it sounded like you had already taken care of some of the big ticket items, the lower and the airlock, I mean, what's left on it to maintain at this point, other than repair and maintenance?
Well, you replace rooms, that's just a routine maintenance. You got the head, the head we had welded, it had holes in it again, you know, it's old, it's 2002. The grit is abrasive, so it constantly hits that steel, puts holes in it, then we'll put another patch on it, another patch on it, so...
Do you guys use AR steel at all?
No. So...
Do you have any idea what the life expectancy is, Bob, in a village our size? About, they shouldn't like it.
Sweep, I average 16 to 20 years, our size.
And we're at 17 now.
Yeah. And it's a matter of, you know, you gotta clean it out, you can't just sweep it and put it away, you have to clean it out, you have to wash it, you know, wax it, even wax it. It's a matter of just maintaining it, it's like a car, if you maintain it, you know, it'll last you a while, so...
And the trade-in value is on here, $27,000?
$27,000, yeah.
And what have you spent on the last five years, would you say, on repair and maintenance?
Ah, just ballpark. If I had to guess, $30,000. I mean, I'd have to have Marcy Bull in the files, easily.
Would $30,000 in the next five years maintain it?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Unless something big went wrong.
Right, which shouldn't, yeah. For three years, it's under warranty.
Well, no, he's talking about the current machine.
Yeah.
He's asking if...
The current machine.
Oh, the current machine!
The current machine.
He spent $30,000 in the last five years, I was asking for a nutsman for the next five years, if you were to...
I thought he misunderstood the question, that's why.
All right. Yeah. $20,000?
Mm-hmm.
You know, it really depends, it's, you know, it's 2002, you know...
But overall, like, engine hours are relatively low for a 20-year-old machine, right? 25 hours?
They are low, but with all, you know, the maintenance record, or all the major stuff we've done, it's due.
So do they take the trade-in, do they, do they like rehab it and try to sell it to another village?
No, what they do is they bring it in, leave it as is.
Oh, and they try to sell it to somebody else?
Yeah, I mean, they'll clean it up, you know, but they don't, you know, usually what they do with the old sweepers, it'll go to the smaller communities that can't afford it. Yeah, so...
Mentioned, too, that sometimes they'll sell them to people who have large parking lots, for parking lots.
Any other questions or discussion?
No one service at one, our meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, if there's no other questions or discussion, is anybody interested in making a motion? I think the request is the TIMCO, am I saying that correctly? The TIMCO, 226-997, the trade-in of 30, or excuse me, $27,000, an interest rate at 3.8%, and that's on a seven-year term. So the average payment for seven years would be 45,175, but we have the option of going shorter term than that?
Correct, yeah.
Is that something we have to designate now, or is that something that we can take a look at?
I think we can take a look at it, yeah.
I know we discussed that a little bit at the last meeting, possibly going shorter.
Are those numbers right? I'm going finance, $275,000 for $45,000.
That's where I was, I was doing math.
226, 226 to $45,000 also.
Yeah, that doesn't seem right. Where's the...
Big data?
No, the paperwork from the last meeting, thank you, Donna. So, last meeting, yeah, we were at, at 7, oh, it's right in front of me, thank you.
The 266 includes the trade-in value.
The 226.
No, it's not 226, it's 260.
260, this says, this says 226, so that's the problem.
Okay. A second motion?
Wait, did we have a motion? I missed it.
We'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Bowden, to lease purchase the TIMCO street sweeper with the year term to be determined.
And they'll be subject to the lease purchase agreements and documents that we will have to approve, once they come through.
Coming through the, back to the board?
Yes.
Say it again, subject to?
The lease purchase contract agreements that will be coming to the board from, I assume that's TCF Equipment?
It's TCF Equipment.
Equipment Finance. Yeah, they'll prepare lease purchase documents, and we'll have to look at those.
Yeah, it was 266. The last meeting, it was 266-997.
So we've got 266-997, going off this paper, not off of this paper, and it's, if we went seven years, it would be 43.5, not 45,175.
No, no.
That's if you...
That's if you do it 30 days.
Oh, 30 days, okay, sorry, my bad. The 45,175 is correct, I was on the wrong line.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
No.
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Morewka?
Yes.
Motion carries five yes, one no. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, new business, review draft of revisions to the village board meeting's public comment policy. Talking with Amy after the last meeting, I'm sorry. Talking with Amy after the last meeting, you know, we were talking about our public comment policy, because we had people wanting, normally public comment is at the beginning of the meeting, and then we had people wanting to comment at the end of the meeting, and then we had one people wanting to comment during the meeting as we were talking about action items. And I kind of tried to explain at that time that when the board is discussing an action item, it's not time for the public to be making comment on that, that's a board action item discussion. So we really didn't have anything, a written public comment policy for the board. So Amy talked with the attorney, and came up with what you have in front of you, and I, the guy, if I could, I'll read through it real quick, just so everybody hears what it says. So, "The proposed Piaton public comment policy for board meetings, in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Piaton provides an opportunity for public comment at board meetings. The Board has a responsibility to conduct the business of the village in an orderly and efficient manner, and to establish reasonable procedures for public comment at its meetings. The following procedures for public comment are intended to maintain the orderly conduct of meetings and ensure fairness to those who wish to address the Board. One, anyone interested in speaking publicly at a board meeting is welcome. Individuals wishing to speak during a public comment must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. Speakers shall be called in order. The public comment portion of the meeting occurs prior to the business of the meeting. This public comment period is intended to provide an opportunity for individuals to comment on items relevant to village business. Issues relevant to village business are defined to mean information about village events, issues that the public body has the authority to address, items listed on the agenda, and items or issues previously voted on by the village board, or that the village board has the authority to consider or vote on in the future. Speakers will be limited to three minutes per person during the general public comment portion of the meeting. The total time allotted for general public comment period will be 30 minutes unless a majority of the board votes to extend the discussion. Only one person may speak at a time during any public comment period. Speakers during public comment may speak only when recognized by the village president and while the speaker is at the podium. No person may assign their time to any other person. A group of three or more individuals speaking on the same topic are asked to designate a single spokesperson to present the group's public comments. Repetitive comments or arguments are not permitted. Other than during the time designated for public comment, no person may address the Board or engage in public comment except upon the consent of a majority of the members present. Board members may, but will generally not, respond to comments from speakers. The Board President, trustees, or the village administrator may respond as appropriate and, for example, direct speakers to the appropriate staff member for assistance. The Board may comment, take action, or not take action with respect to a public comment at a future board meeting as it deems appropriate. The President may cut off or stop a speaker if the public comment is irrelevant to the village business, unreasonably repetitious, substantially disruptive, or violates the rules of decorum. Members of the public and Board members should all treat everyone with respect. Abusive, foul, threatening, demeaning, and disorderly language and/or conduct are not permitted. Any person who disrupts the village board meeting may be subject to removal from the meeting room. The Board has the authority to determine procedural matters regarding public participation not otherwise defined in this policy." I think this kind of clarifies, you know, the whole concept, you know, of public comment, you know, we welcome public comment, you know, there are, we held, earlier this evening, we held a public hearing at 6:30 on the appropriations ordinance. We hold public hearings at planning and zoning when it comes to different various annexations or changes in zoning, or those types of matters, and those are all appropriate places for the public to also participate in the process. But once we get to the Board, and the Board is discussing an action item, then it's not really a time for discussion or debate, it's time for the Board to act on those items. But we will, I think we'll continue, I, you know, we've always had the public comment at the beginning of the meeting, as this policy states, and we can continue to do that, but with these, this policy in place, we can leave copies of that up by the sign-in sheet, and then we have some clear definition going forward. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Is there any hierarchy as far as residents versus non-residents?
I do not think we can...
No, you cannot, open maniacs allows anybody from... So theoretically, somebody, a non-resident could come in, a series of them, and just take over the whole public comment section. Well, they could try.
But that's why we put the, we put the time limit in there also.
Well, that means...
Right, so, like, Amy called around to various communities around us to find out what they did, you know, as far as public comment, so she's got a... So, Homard Lynn's three minutes...
Can you see that?
Yeah, Homard Lynn's three minutes, Elmhurst is three minutes, Crest Hill has three limits, Payless Park has no limit, Olympia Fields is three minutes, Flossmore is five minutes, Willowbrook three minutes, Rushton Park three minutes, Glen Ellen three minutes, and Lake Forest three minutes. These are all communities that have a written policy, and like I said, I think a written policy is good, we have the ability, you know, as a board, to expand the 30-minute time limit if, you know, we deem it necessary. So I mean, I just think some structure is necessary, and I think it's good to, just to clarify it.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, if there's no other questions or discussion on it, I would entertain a motion to adopt the revision of the village board meeting's public comment policy.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Morewka. Yes.
Morewka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, item B, fence variances, number one, D and A, Amazcain, 413 Locust Lane, says 412 on your agenda, it should be 413. 413 Locust Lane variance, requested to install a six-foot vinyl fence. and croaching 15 feet into the 30-foot setback on a corner lot. Is there somebody here that can step up to the podium? If you could just give your name for the record, please.
Sure, it's Dawn Amazcain.
In your packets, I believe, you have the petition for the fence variance. And if you want to maybe explain, you know, what you're asking for.
Sure, yeah. So, we have a corner lot on the corner of West Gate and Locust, which is kind of an oversized lot. We recently installed a semi-in-ground pool, and so we have a temporary fence right now in the meantime, so we're looking to put in a vinyl fence, which would go from where our, kind of where our porch is around, and then all the way around to the side of the home, which would still leave on the corner of Locust and West Gate, you can kind of see on the picture there. It would still leave enough of a visual appeal, so for the cars coming on West Gate trying to turn on Locust, it wouldn't block the view. I think that was probably one of the main reasons for the 30-foot while we're asking for a 15-foot. And I think that's probably a recent picture of our, of our home. And you can see the temporary fence, you can kind of see where our pool is. So, the 30-foot kind of regulation would put the white vinyl fence basically up to where our current pool is. So, we're just asking for an extra 15 feet to allow us to use the yard in a more appropriate fashion.
Where it says value of construction, what number is that? On the application?
The construction for the fence, or?
Well, the application for the building permit, is that 3,000, or is that, it's kind of written over this number here?
Yeah, three, about three thousand, yes. And that's the positive material for the vinyl, the vinyl thing.
Did you know you needed a fence before the pool was decided on?
We did. So, we knew we needed a fence. We didn't really understand the whole variance part of it. We, we thought that it was 30 feet from the street, so 30 feet from the street would be appropriate. But when we kind of further read the application and it was 30 feet from the sidewalk, that was part of a misunderstanding in our part to not recognize that it was actually from the sidewalk, 30 feet versus from the actual curb to that.
And it's like white PVC?
Yeah.
What's the purpose of bringing the fence up so close to the front of the house? On the sides?
So, on the side, and I don't know if you have a picture of, I can't really see it here, but kind of towards the front of our home, we have a porch. So, our thought was to start it right where the porch ended, which is kind of almost to the side of, it's kind of cut off right there on the picture. So, it wouldn't really be all the way in the front of the house, because we have a pool porch. It would be on the opposite side, I guess.
But I don't have, I don't have the porch.
Yeah, it gets kind of cut off on there. So, it would be from where the porch ends. So, it wouldn't actually be in front of the house. There's actually a good, probably 30 or 50 feet from the actual West Gate street.
How far from the front of the house back is the fence be?
Oh, probably 50 feet, I would think, because it's very large from this actual street on the West Gate where, West Gate is, to the end of our porch. So, it wouldn't obstruct the visual.
I'm not so worried about the visual. Obviously, we can't obstruct that. I'm more concerned with the appearance.
Sure.
You know. But I don't see how that could sit back 50 feet.
And I could be wrong with my, with my.
This is the street, right? Am I looking at this right? It's a street?
It's the front of the house.
I think this is the front of the house where the porch is.
Right, the front of the house faces Locust.
Yes.
So, they have all this porch, and the garage is over here, so this part of the fence is way over here, way back here.
It is, it is fairly far back.
This one seems closer.
So, it essentially, like, there's, if you look at the picture on the screen, there's one more window next to it. So, the fence would start at that first window. So, it wouldn't be, I think, to what you're asking for about in front. It's not in front of the home. It's where the porch ends, and then there's one more window that's not in that picture.
Would be behind that window, or in front of that window?
Right in front of that window. Correct. So, it would say it would be your side porch. Then it actually starts the structure of the home. So, it wouldn't be like in front. It's behind kind of the garage line.
Okay.
Is that a little cutout? Can you see that cutout where I'm pointing that arrow? Is that the cutout of the porch right here? This was prior to construction, a lot of construction of the pool and whatnot, but it kind of gets the layout.
Then how far out would it come then, do you think?
So, sidewalk's here. Sidewalk would be here. So. It would be probably about here. Because the pool is almost at the edge, it's almost at the, the pool's almost here.
Correct.
Which is where the fence should actually be, according to the ordinance. So.
So, if you put your cursor a little bit, I guess, to your right. It's the other, the other way. Like, right about there.
That's where you want it to come out.
Correct, because that's where the, our porch ends, and that's kind of where the first window begins.
So, in the middle of your house, and then back this way.
Correct.
There's no indication how, where that fence is going to start.
Yeah, we don't have any distance there. We don't have a measurement.
The house above that to the north, what is, that's probably 30 feet from the sidewalk to that northern fence, right?
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, I don't think they got a variance. This is.
So, that would be 30 feet.
Yeah, correct.
So, it's almost essentially the same that they're doing from where they started on their side. We're just asking for it to be 15 feet further towards the sidewalk.
So, as far as the front of the house goes, what is the restriction now? I mean, how far do you have to be? Is that another variance, or is that?
You're not allowed to bring a fence inside, is the front yard deemed to be the yard on Locust?
Yes.
Locust there?
Mm-hmm.
You're not allowed to put a fence in the front yard at all. It would have to start minimum at the building.
That's where it's going to be.
30 feet back.
Well, where the building actually, actually is.
Right there.
Yeah, essentially.
Oh, you mean the building at the pool?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, the house. You can't run a fence up into the front yard at all, and that's what, I was concerned with this drawing because I can't tell where exactly. I know you want 15 feet here.
Right.
That's easy. But now, the question is, where is this fence going to start? How long, and it goes to the rear lot line, right? So, where does it start?
So, I believe, when my husband measured it, from where we wanted to start from the end of the porch to the end of the home is 24 feet, and that's from, and that's kind of what this, kind of. Our best rendering line on here. So, that, where the, that line is, that's where the, our porch ends, and that's kind of where the building facade begins, where the window is to our living room. So, that would be kind of on that, that side.
So, it's 24 foot in front of the back of the house. So, how much does that leave to the front of the house?
With the porch.
13 feet to the front of the house, looks like.
Okay.
Because it's 30 feet, I guess, from our driveway to the front of our house is 30, 30.93 feet from the end of our driveway to the house. So, that's kind of what we were saying is, like, there's still at least 30 feet plus the additional.
10.
10 from the front.
This is supposed to be 32, because that's a street. And that's right up to the house.
So, is that another, I mean, we have a request for one variance, we have a request for the 15-foot.
Right, I'm trying to remember the fence ordinance.
Front of the house.
It's the front of the house, so I think they're okay there.
It's just the side is 30 feet.
Right. So, as long as they are inside the front of the house, that would, that would be right here. This is the front yard, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, as long as the fence doesn't extend beyond the house. I believe it's okay with ordinance.
That's how we understood it when we did the variance for the 30 feet. That's how we understood it, whether that's correct or not.
Right. Well, I'm just trying to clarify.
Sure, yeah.
Just trying to make sure that everybody is clear.
Well, what's the, what's the required spacing from the sidewalk?
30 feet.
30 feet. That's the variance that you.
So, the variance I need is 30 to 15.
Okay, so the front to back's okay.
Front to back is okay.
But the side is the one.
The side is. So, let's focus on that. Now that we've determined that the front of the house is okay.
That being the case, then, do you let everybody put a fence within 15 feet of the sidewalk?
That's why, that's why they call it a variance. I mean, you know, I, corner lots, as we have learned over the course of time, are always a pain to fence, you know? I would always recommend somebody, if you want to, if you want to, if you want to own a corner lot, don't plan on fencing it, you know, unless you're going to be able to get a variance. But variances aren't guaranteed, you know? And, yeah, the question is, do, how many variances are you going to grant, you know? The rules are there for a reason.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I, I don't know. That's up to the Board, you know, that's.
So, how did we build a pool and then decide we needed a fence? Walk me through that whole process.
Oh, we didn't. We knew we needed a fence.
Okay.
So, we were kind of doing the application simultaneously, and then we didn't realize that we actually needed to do a variance, and it had to come before the Board.
Did you build the pool yourself?
American Sales did.
She said they thought it was 30 feet from the street.
Correct.
And then they found out it was 30 feet from the sidewalk.
Normally, wouldn't the contractor want a plat of survey and everything else in the ordinances to know what they're?
We're not the only community that has fence ordinances and stuff. American Sales probably let you down.
How long has the pool been in?
Um, this weekend. So, two days.
So, with that 15 feet out, how far away is it from the pool unless you went closer in? Like, if you went to where it needs to be, how close would it be to the pool?
Um, I think it would be pretty much almost on top, maybe 2 feet.
I'll see when you're able to get around it.
Probably not.
So, the pool went in this weekend?
It did.
And you knew you were going to come here, it's going to spend all this money, not knowing whether you could get a variance?
That's just the luck that we have. We're not very sophisticated at this, to be honest with you, so I'll just be truthful. Like, we've never built a home, we've never, like, had to do this stuff, so we kind of lean on people that. We're smart now, I know that we should read all the ordinances before we build by. If we would have known it, we probably wouldn't have bought a corner lot, because when we bought the corner lot and paid the up-charge, it was like, no, you can build just from the sidewalk without really reading the village and the town's laws.
But that's most villages, though.
So, I'm just saying, like, we're just not smart enough, like, not informed enough to know that stuff, so. So, we're not trying, like, it's just, the timing is just, is what it is. So, we're trying to do the right thing by doing the permits.
Learning as you go.
Yes, yes. Hindsight is 2020, and we should have had all of those applications and all of this turned in probably in the last month beforehand, but we didn't, and so here we are.
The burden of responsibility is yours.
It is. I disagree with that.
And then also your contractor. And I think once you do this, you set a precedent of, okay, you can build within 15 feet of the sidewalk. And I think the appearance is not good, and it's.
So, how, the way it's set up, how many feet would it be between the sidewalk and your fence, according to this, which is 15 feet? So, if, well, it'd still be only 28, if they even just went in five. Instead of having 15 feet, only go 10 feet.
And I will say, it's tough kind of living, moving into this town, because when you look at other places in our subdivision, and I know ordinance has changed, but like, there's several houses that have corner lots that are like five, three to five feet from the sidewalk. To us, as we're looking around our subdivision, well, and I understand that they may have lived there for years and years and go on the new side, and that's the left side, so. When you kind of look around, you're like, oh, maybe we have a shot at a variance, because.
So, I guess what I'm looking for is, you know, some kind of starting point, consensus, direction.
I can make a motion to deny.
There is a motion that has been presented to deny the variance. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second? Okay, so we'll continue the discussion. Any other thoughts? I know that, I don't know, I don't know what to say. I guess I'm just looking for.
Well, but you can certainly allow less than 15 feet if you choose to. That would be, and as I would see it, you would run, if you do not get that variance, you've got to run that fence from the corner of the house, right? To the back. And how close did you say the pool is to the corner of the house? Because the house is 30 foot, 30 foot back, right? Try, house is 30 feet back.
House is 30 feet, 30 feet.
Yeah, so they'd be running the fence from the corner of the house, wherever the gutter is, because I'm seeing it there, straight back. And somebody asked you, how close is the pool to that lot?
It would probably be one or two feet, probably.
So, you think out from that is a variance? Anywhere from 50 feet to 10 feet to whatever.
I guess that the trend I see is, you know, we've gotten, you know, past the privacy fence issue because there are so many variances requests for that, but there's a lot of people want more than just a backyard fence.
Well, with corner lots, I mean, corner lots are the issue. That's really where the issue comes into play. So, I guess this Board has to decide. Past Boards have handled it one way, future Boards will handle it another way, but it's how this Board wants to handle, you know, the issue. Because every time somebody wants to put a fence on a corner lot, they're going to be before this Board looking for a variance. So, I guess, yeah, we are in a way setting a precedence.
And say, say, you let this one go, so why, why am I different?
Right. But I mean, again, variance is a case-by-case basis, too. I mean, you don't necessarily have to justify past action. So, you can look at the circumstances surrounding it, and you can look at the area surrounding it, and you can look at, you know, what's there, and then justify it in that manner. it, and you can look at, you know, what's there, and then justify it in that manner. So it's just a matter of how the board is going to either deny or justify some kind of a variance. That's kind of where we're at. So I heard, Shelley mentioned, I don't know, I heard you say something, but I didn't.
Just like back it up like five or 10 feet, instead of having it 15 feet off, can we have it five or 10 feet off the house?
Well, as the attorney said, I think that's kind of, that's, that's within the board's ability to say, hey, this is what, this is what we're willing to do. Is it acceptable to the homeowner? So, I mean, that's all part of this process.
Just a, a point of reference, I guess, for the next agenda.
Because we have one coming, yep.
Yeah, is, if I'm looking at this right, it looks like it's six feet off the, off the sidewalk.
Right.
So she's asking for 15, the rest is for six.
But they were here, meeting before, asking for, was it, I don't remember what it was.
It was for the.
Okay, all right.
The rule states 30.
The rule states 30. So anything.
The preference we set is, it's anywhere between zero and 30, on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, exactly.
Which is tough.
It is, it is. But that's the whole concept of a variance.
Yep.
So I guess what I'm looking for is if there's any other trustee that would be willing to put forth a thought, a proposal, an alternative, or?
So I'd move that, I'd like to allow 10 feet off of the, you know, give them a 10-foot variance instead of 15.
I second that.
But, but can we move the fence, I don't know which direction, can we move it back? You've got it right, right in the middle of your house, where your porch ends, right?
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. So we move it to this corner, and let you come out and give you the room on your pool, but get that fence back in your backyard as opposed to on the side of your yard.
But.
In addition to what you just said.
Well, as a condition to grant the variance, you could impose that, but I, I think it's in accord with the ordinance already to, to, as long as it doesn't go past the front of the house. As I recall that ordinance, although I, I really haven't read it.
That's how I understood it, was at the front of the house, as long as you're not, like by the porch coming back, that wasn't really a variance, like it would, that's how I understood it. I'm not saying that I understood it correctly.
Yeah, let's, let us review the ordinance really quick, just to make sure that we're
not.
I mean, that's how I recall it, too.
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
There, there is a motion, there is a motion.
That was a motion?
Yes, there was a motion and there was a second.
One other consideration, I guess.
There, there's a motion and a second.
Okay.
A motion and a second.
Who used the second?
So a motion by trustee March and seconded by trustee Morevka. And the motion was to allow a 10-foot setback, or 10-foot?
So it'd be 20 feet.
No, 10-foot variance.
10-foot variance.
From the 30-foot.
From the 30-foot variance. All right, just want to make sure we're saying it right.
Just so I understand, so that means instead of.
Well, we're still in the middle here. We're still working, we're still working.
And to start at the back of the house instead of?
No, that, that is not part of the motion.
All right.
That's not part of it.
It would be, it would basically, without being said, it would be in accordance with the allowance, the allowed within the ordinance today.
So that would be March?
Yes.
Morevka?
Correct.
Jones?
No.
Bowden?
No.
Ham?
No.
Parker?
No.
So motion fails for no to yes.
That was with the 10-foot.
That was with the 10-foot. So this is my suggestion, you're going to have to kind of take a look at your situation again. You can reapply, so you might want to come back at a different measurement. I mean, that, you could always bring it back, you know, and request the variance again. You could possibly include where you're going to start the fence on the side of the house, you know, that type of stuff. So that's something for you guys to take a look at, but right now, the variance has been denied. Okay?
So just for point of clarification?
Yes.
Can we go back to the side? Because we don't, I just don't understand if I need a variance for the side.
We're going to clarify that. You can talk with Amy, okay?
Well, you wouldn't be able to come in from, from the house, because you're going to be violating the 30-foot setback. If you started at the corner of the house back, you would be at the 30-foot setback. Then you could move all the way to the back. But like you said, that supposedly puts the fence within two feet of the pool, which is why you wanted to push it out further to that side.
Yes.
And that's been denied. So at that point, it doesn't matter, because there's no fence you can put on that side yard, except even with the house, it's going to meet the 30-foot setback.
So would some of the trustees have voted no? Would you have voted yes if it would have been brought to the back of the house?
My, my concern is, is, I guess, also is the curvature of the road. Are you going to maintain 20 feet along the whole thing and have a curved fence? Because the road's curved, which it looks like, right?
Well, it would have to be.
So if you're going to maintain 20 feet, the fence has to curve as well.
I think it gets big, and look at it, Troy, it looks like it gets wider as it curves.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
So I, it, well, it looks curved on here, like, the yard in the back is barely straight. So when we had asked him to come out, it was not curved that I saw on a, on a plan. It was very straight.
Overhead the.
Westgate's curved.
79 back here.
Right.
So it would have to be curved.
It's curved. So if you get, I'm fine with it, you know, 10 feet, but at some point, it's going to be against, you know, it's going to have to have a curved.
It would be at the end, at the back, it would be.
Which a curved fence would be pretty weird.
Well, it doesn't have to be curved, it just has to be within.
Within that 10-foot, so I mean, you may have to start at five to, or whatever, eight, to be within the 10. You'd run the fence straight, but to maintain within the 10, you'd have to probably start at less than 10, is what it would end up being.
And I think she's looking for 10 feet off the house, is the way I understood it, so.
Well, can I make another motion? Sure, we're still on this item.
So I moved to allow a 10-foot variance with the fence starting at the back of the house.
Okay, so is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Bowden.
Should have let me read it.
I'm sorry. I should have, but I could.
March?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
March? Jones?
Yes.
And Morevka?
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 0. Now, you do realize that when that happens, there's going to have to be a small, a 10-foot fence between the house and the fence that's running straight back.
Well, no, because they're starting off the back of the house, then.
Well, yeah, but they, that, that won't be 10-foot. If they, if, if, if instead of a 30-foot setback, you essentially have a 20-foot setback.
Right, from this way.
Okay, now, if you start the fence at the back of the house with a 20-foot setback, you're going to have a gap between the fence and the house. Right?
No, because the fence won't be in the side yard anymore, it'll come straight off.
Straight off the back of the house.
Straight off the back. On that side, on the other side, it'll be.
I see.
So on the south side, it'll come right off the back of the house. So it'll just come 10 feet to the south, towards the Westgate, and then it would shoot over.
And go straight back.
Straight to the east. So it wouldn't be going up to the porch like she's showing now.
Yeah, right. That's, that's, that's right. When it comes down, on the south side there, when it comes, you're going to go all the way to the back of the property line, right, with the fence, as I see it? When it comes down to the, to the edge of the house, okay, isn't there going to be a gap between the house and the fence? That's all I'm.
Well, that's going to have, that's going to have to be fence, there's going to have to be a gate.
Between the house.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's going to have to be enclosed.
Right.
It's going to have to be, it's going to have to be completely enclosed.
That's what I'm simply pointing out.
Yeah. No open gap, but it'd have to be a gate or a piece of.